Hello. I'm going to try to do this without a microphone, although we have one if needed. Thank you all for being here tonight. I'm Joyce Yuri. I'm the Chair of the Linnley Park Neighborhood Association, and we're really excited that you're here to be with us for this candidate forum that both us and Sunset Hills Neighborhood Association are hosting. So our moderator tonight is Michael Korts. You might know him as the voice of the Whirlies if he sounds familiar.
You can hear me on Friday nights. Touchdown early.
I'm going to turn it over to him, but we're so glad that everybody's here with us.
And again, hello folks. Welcome everyone to the, I guess we'll call this the District Four Candidate Forum, as well as for the mayoral and at-large elections coming up for municipal elections for the city of Greensboro. Just a friendly reminder, tomorrow is the first day of early voting for the primary. So you can go to your plot spots up there by the old courthouse. I think they are set up at the special events center at the Coliseum as well.
Not until next week.
Is that next week?
The first five days are only downtown.
Only downtown. Thank you, Mr. Beard, I appreciate it.
That's important.
Okay. It's only downtown for the first few days. And then we'll have a general election on November the 4th. Well, that is, well, thank you to all the candidates who have shown up this evening, all of you, we really appreciate that. And thank you for putting in the time and effort to try to represent our city and our municipality with your time and effort. Thanks to everyone who agreed to participate this evening. We sent out to all the candidates who had filed for this election, we sent out notifications, given them questions and parameters for them to respond. And we've had an excellent response. Not everyone showed up, a few couldn't show up, and I think they've left materials in the back if you want to see some of their campaign information for those folks who couldn't make it this evening. But again, we want to thank you to all those folks who have shown up tonight. Also a friendly reminder, there's snacks and water back there, bathrooms, if you need to go, all the way back to the left for the ladies and to the right for the men going towards the end. Okay. Also, I'd like to thank the city of Greensboro for the fine work they've done here, especially the Parks and Recreation Department and the good folks here at Linnley Recreation Center who have facilitated us this evening. I'd like to thank them as well. And thank you for every one of you guys who've come out tonight. I think civic participation is the heart of democratic republic. Grassroots, what we do and how we participate lets us give a voice to what we like to see in our city, local, county, state, federal government. And thank you for that. And again, my name is Michael Korts. The guy that usually does this, a guy by the name of Steven Johnson, and I'll bring him up if that has purpose, I'm not drifting people. But Steven's responsible for the Corner Market. Anybody been to the Corner Market? It used to be up at Elam and Walker in front of Sticks and Stones. It got so big, they moved it over to St. Andrews. Well, quite appropriately, it used to be in Linnley Park, now it's in Sunset Hills. And tonight's forum is being sponsored by the neighborhood associations, respectively for Linnley Park and for Sunset Hills. Join the local neighborhood associations. This is your best opportunity for grassroots interaction. Linnley Park, linnlyparknc.com, go to that, you can get involved in Linnley Park activities. And for Sunset Hills, you want to get involved with the running of the balls and hanging with the things between. We labor with that over there. At sunsethillsneighborhood.org. So both of those things are viable for us to manage. We're going to be live streamed this evening as well on Linnley Park Neighborhood Facebook page. Just go to Linnley Park Neighborhood Facebook page. Because we're all, how are you?
I'm good.
There's an empty seat up front here for you. So what's tonight's format going to look like? So what we've done, we've broken this forum up into three sections. The first section will be comprised of our, of the at-large candidates for city council who'll be running across the city. Six of the 10 candidates have shown up this evening because they also represent District Four. But they also represent the rest of the city and will be acquiring how they kind of balance that. So six out of those 10 folks have shown up this evening. And what we're going to do for these folks, each one of them will have five minutes to stand up, introduce themselves, up to five minutes if they wish, to introduce themselves and tell them what's their background, why they're running, what expertise and skills they bring to the job, what's their vision for the future. Okay? I'll be assisted this evening by Mr. Snowden, our timer here, but we won't let anybody go on and on, he's about to hold the side up. I'll be in a moment.
Yes.
Stop. But here we go. So we'll try to help you out with that. And folks, you can look over there and see how your time works, so if you need to put a wrap on it. I taught at Grandly High School for 32 years, so I'm dealing with the crowd. Mr. Killian, how are you today?
Doing well, myself.
I'm doing well. After that, what we encourage you to do, we'll have some folks going around. If you have individual questions that you have for any of the candidates or any of the candidates in general, we'll be passing out three-by-five index cards. Joyce, folks around here, Diane in the back, if you'd like to ask any questions. So what we'll do after those five-minute intervals where you get to introduce themselves, we'll collect these cards and we'll try to do a 10-minute Q and A. Give each of you the opportunity to briefly answer the questions that we may have from the individuals in our audience today. After that, we will have a 10-minute break, a little session for folks to mingle. If you've got questions you need to ask, you want to press the question a little bit and see how folks are, go ahead. In a nice way, I'm sorry, to do that. After that, we will do a session for the District Four candidates, more specific to us. They each had a different set of questions. And if you look at your, I kind of omitted this, but on each seat, we sent out a list of questions that kind of served as a preliminary guideline for the type of things we would like to hear from the candidates, and hopefully they addressed it or addressed their responses to these questions. So each one of these are for, I think, the at-large district and mayoral questions in order here, so that's kind of how we have presented to them. And then after that, we'll do our mayoral, 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 our mayoral candidates will come in and ask, I see Miss Abazai already, they're already coming in. Each candidate will be given the opportunity to introduce themselves, their background, their experience, as well as broadly addressing district and municipal concerns, from a short list of questions that was made available to them, as I just pointed out. And thereafter, we'll have that 10-minute Q and A session. You can get the index card. And each candidate will be given a set amount of time. I just want to make sure I've got all my notes done. Then we'll have a 10-minute break. Any questions about the format? All righty, folks, let's start with our at-large candidate. We have two of them running this year, including two incumbents, Mr. Hugh Holston and Jamila Pender, both Irving Allen, Richard Beard, T. Diane Bellamy-Small, Carla Franklin, Latoya B. Gathers, Samuel Hoskins, Michael McKinney, and Denise Rock. Reports that they have six of those candidates here tonight. And we asked them, put to them a series of questions that talk about what are our pressing needs for economic development, infrastructure, and public safety here in Greensboro, across all the districts and through the neighborhoods that are thriving, as well as some neighborhoods who have been historically underserved? How do you plan to address those issues? How do you plan on building consensus amongst other council members? And how do you equally, equitably distribute, I think is an important question, between individual districts and the city at large? Sometimes needs are different there. And then citywide versus district-wide kind of issue. Okay? We'll talk to each of those individuals. We're going to be going in alphabetical order. So our first at-large candidate for the evening is Mr. Richard Beard.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. So welcome, and thank you all for doing this. I'm thrilled to be here. I am Richard Beard. I'm a native of Greensboro. I graduated from Page High School, so if you saw me cringe when I heard touchdown Whirly on the date called October 17th, I might hear that more times than I would to hear, so.
At Page, don't worry.
Yeah, well, I always say Page, well, I know, I can probably hear you from across the field, so I don't know that. But I'm also a graduate of Greensboro College. I moved to Roanoke, Virginia for 10 years, where I started a career in economic development with the Roanoke Valley Economic Development Partnership. In 1996, I had the pleasure of coming back home and working for the Greensboro Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development. And my 10 years in Roanoke and coming back to Greensboro really made me appreciate what Greensboro is and what Greensboro can be. And that was 30 years ago. After a stint at the Greensboro Chamber, I went into the private sector of site selection. I took my public experience to the private sector with site selection and incentive negotiations for corporations throughout the southeast. And then went into a career in commercial real estate, and I was involved in Rock Creek Center in Eastern Guilford County, where that happened around 2006. And I'm proud that I was a part of creating a billion dollars' worth of tax base at Rock Creek Center and well over 5,000 jobs since 2006. So in 2022, I decided I was ready to make a career change. I retired from real estate because of my passion for Greensboro. And at the time, you know, people were pretty angry with politics and the pandemic and everything else. And the two things that bring people together are music and sports. Those are the two things that I really love. And I decided that I wanted to run the Greensboro Sports Foundation, which I was involved in forming back in 2018. I was an active volunteer in sports and sports tourism. And I know what that does to our community, so I wanted to continue lifting that up in a positive way for Greensboro. Just to tell you what economic impact that sports tourism is, 2024, we tracked over 141 events, youth and amateur sports, which created over 241,000 hotel room nights and $265 million economic impact. So it's a big part of our economy here that a lot of people just aren't aware of. I've served on many commissions and boards over the years, both private and public. I've been on the Coliseum Commission for 17 years, both as an appointed but also as a liaison with my roles in sports and different organizations. So I'm proud that I've been very entrenched in Greensboro. Two minutes left. Fly, Ryan. Greensboro has incredible opportunities ahead, best in my lifetime, tens of thousands of jobs are coming. Current priorities and spending is not showing results we need and deserve. Our budget's gone up $211 million over the last five years. We have $280 million worth of deferred maintenance in parks and recreation alone. You know, over across the parking lot with the pool that's been closed for two or three years. We need a safe, vibrant downtown. Safety continues to be a big issue, which I think the pressing issues are understanding where our money's being spent, how effective it is, and where it can be better allocated. We need a plan for the deferred maintenance. We need attainable and affordable housing. And my number one priority, if elected, we need more police officers, more police cars, and let them do their jobs. I took a police ride along three weeks ago. I'm happy to tell you more about it. Down the street on Spring Garden, we've got issues down there, and I saw it firsthand from 8:00 p.m. until 3:00 a.m. on a Friday night. I want to be in there to do something about it. So I'll give up my last 30 seconds and happy to answer any questions later.
I don't think we have a microphone available. I'm a little louder than the average person, so if anybody would like to need a microphone for their address. And our next candidate for at-large is T. Diane Bellamy-Small, very familiar with her from the school board and our service in the city for many years.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am very, very happy to be here. For me, it's almost like, you know, revisiting. I spent 10 years on the city council, 2003 through 2013. If you ask me, you know, what did I represent? You had the Day Center for Homeless, you had the Justice Center, you have the Learn the Swim program. In fact, the reason that you have the Aquatic Center at the Coliseum Complex is because I was the fifth vote to make that economic impact happen. And I don't know if you remember, but it was estimated that, I think, that first year we were going to have an economic impact of $15 million and wound up being 75 for me. And it hasn't stopped. The experience that I have, if I haven't done it, I know about it. I was the type of, and I am the type of servant leader that goes into my communities. I'm wearing my other hats badge right now because I left the Excellence Program that we were doing for our teachers and school staff, where we selected our Principal of the Year and our Teacher of the Year. So I went over there and then I maneuvered around the, all the streets being closed to get here on time. I'm a curious person. What I mean by that is, there aren't many organizations, particularly as far as government is concerned, that I don't go and stick my nose to find out what's going on. Because what you want is balanced government. What you want is to know, I heard a moderator say about the balance of how monies are spent. When I was on the council before, under the leadership of Rashad Young, we actually started taking the five districts and looking at how monies were distributed. So if it was the G-dollars, we looked at where were they going? Why were they going more over here or over there? And how to balance that? Because you want to make sure that some of your tax money gets spent where you are, not just, you know, on the west side or downtown, where you are. You want to see your roles paid. You want to see your Recreation Center get the upgrades that it needs. And I think that if you have someone who is sitting with the city manager saying, have you looked at District Four? Have you looked at District One? Have you looked at District Two? And start really looking at it from the data, looking at it from the numbers. I'm an advocacy person, so yes, I'm going to advocate for those who feel like they don't have a voice. If you call me, I'm going to listen to you, and then I'm going to put you in touch with the person where the buck stop within. The buck doesn't stop with your elected official, it stops, oops, two minutes. It stops with the people who you expect us to put in charge. Your board is a policy board, but we've got to put effective policies that make sense so that the staff then does what they're supposed to do. I also believe that when I was on the city council before, we did a customer shift. Because when I first got there, the city employees felt like they didn't work for you. And I said, wrong answer. And so I literally took the apartment heads and put them in my car and drove them around in my district and beyond and kept them in there for seven hours and wouldn't let them go to the bathroom. You think that made a depression?
Yes.
All I'm saying is, you want someone, one that has the experience, which I do, and that won't have to spend two years trying to figure it out. And that's going to be vocal. Because it's not about being concerned about the next election. It's about being, making sure that you do the job that you were sent to do right then when you're doing. And I'll make tough decisions. I think this community knows that from the school board, but you're going to get a brand new school. So all I'm saying is, put someone who has the experience, who's not afraid to challenge what needs to happen, and be honest about it. I'm not going to run from you in the grocery store, even if I have to, you know, let my ice melt. I'm going to talk, I'm going to say, hey, this is who you need to talk to. And then I'm going to call them before you call them to make sure that you get what you need. Think that's what you want. You want an everyday person to represent you. And that's who I am. T. Diane Bellamy-Small, and my website is www.votebellamy-small. I didn't kill a lot of trees, so I have just a card on the table. Thank you.
So a little bit out of order tonight, we've got someone else who has a previous engagement, apparently that engagement has lasted for the years. Mr. Holston, apparently, is celebrating his anniversary tonight. These are the candidates, one of them is an incumbent at the at-large seat, Mr. Hugh Holston.
Would you help me out? Okay. Thanks so very much. Good evening, everybody. How you doing?
Great.
I am Hugh Holston, and I am your current Greensboro City Council member-at-large. Back in September of '21, I was appointed to the position by city council. And then in July of '22, I was elected by you at the ballot box in July of '22 to serve as one of the three at-large council members. I'm originally from Fayetteville, North Carolina, and I attended the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. That's where I met my wife. I say that often, but actually, I didn't meet each, she wasn't my wife when I met her. But I met my wife, who actually is a native of Greensboro, a native of Dudley, a Dudley Panther. And she grew up in Ray Warren Homes. And we fell in love from the very beginning, and the rest of that is just a wonderful story. But we moved to Atlanta originally, but then moved back to Greensboro because she wanted to be back home. I fought it a little bit, but when I got here, I actually fell in love with the city of Greensboro. And I got really actively engaged from the very beginning. In my professional career, I worked with AT&amp;T, I worked with Wells Fargo, and Lincoln Financial. I've also been involved in various nonprofit boards and commissions, to include Faith Action International, Preservation Greensboro, NCCJ, the Communities and Schools of Greater Greensboro, the African American Leadership Group, a variety of those. And then also, I've led some boards and commissions here for the city of Greensboro. I've led the Board of Adjustments and also the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm here because I love Greensboro and I have a passion for Greensboro, and I know that my priorities, my pillars for Greensboro are economic development, public safety, and housing. When it comes to economic development, for me, it's very important that our residents have some skin to gain, they have some resources that they can use, and they can participate in the boom that we have here. Public safety, if you don't feel like you're safe at home or in the streets or at work or at the venues, then you're probably not going to want to make moves for our homes. So public safety is one that we really, really need to focus on. And then, once you figure out the economics of it all, and you feel safe, and you're looking for that place, it's where I'm going to drop my anchor, the housing piece. And right now, we're in the housing crisis. You've heard about the housing need. The published need was some $33,000, $34,000. But that was before jet zero and 14,560 jobs that are coming to Greensboro. The challenge is that unless we solve that housing crisis, when the jobs come in, those folks are going to take our incentives, but they're going to move to Burlington, they're going to move to Lexington, they're going to move to Kearnsville with our incentive dollars. They're going to spend monies in those communities. I'm selfish. I want them to spend that money here. So I need for us to find a way to make sure that we drive housing. Going back to economic development, we're on the cusp of absolute greatness. We have brought in over the last three years some $20 billion in new capital investment. We've been out some 23,000 new jobs for our community, and we've retained over 1,100 jobs. But now, what do we do next? And that's where Dina, a member of city council, having the experience, and experience does matter, but we can't just settle on experience. We also have to have a passion and a creativity and an innovation and a drive for the what's next. We have to be willing to make some mistakes. We have to be willing to make some mistakes so that, for the benefit of the residents and the businesses in Greensboro. I'm excited about being here. I'm excited that you're here. I'm even more excited about my anniversary. It's my 42nd wedding anniversary. I think I just gave it myself. But thanks for being here. I look forward to your questions a little bit later on.
And again, these, the primary election is going to be really important because out of these 10 at-large candidates, the primary election is coming up on October 7th, the field is going to be winnowed down to six. And then those six people will be there for the general election. I think it's two for the, each of the districts and two of the mayoral elections as well. I guess first it would be Carla Franklin?
All right.
Oh, sure, sure. I'm saying, I'll bring it to you.
Just in case, just in case my voice is not bigger than. Thank you, thank you. Hi, everyone. I want to thank you for inviting me here to District Four. I'm actually pretty familiar with Linnley Center. My kids came here for summer camp one year, and we love the center and we love the community. I am Carla Franklin Richards, but for the sake of the campaign, Carla Franklin, which is how I grew up and everyone grew up knowing me. I grew up in Shannon Woods, Shannon Woods in southeast Greensboro. And when I grew up in Shannon Woods, it was a beautiful, working, middle-class neighborhood where I felt safe riding my bike, hanging out with friends, playing in the woods. I went on to graduate from Southwest Guilford High School and then go on to Duke University, where I received my bachelor's degree in science ecology and biology. And I thought I wanted to be a doctor, but found, fell in love with computers while I was at Duke and decided to go and become a Java programmer for Deloitte Consulting. And at that moment, I decided to leave Greensboro and not come back for 25 years. And during that time, I got to do some amazing things, including work for IBM in Austin, Texas. Then go on to Philadelphia, where I also worked for IBM, but as a global consultant, where I built solutions for the Mexican government, where I built solutions for biotech and pharma companies, where I got to kind of go all over the world. And I was exposed to new things and new ideas, which made me really curious and wanted then go to business school. And I moved to New York, Manhattan, to attend Columbia Business School in 2006, where a whole new world was opened up to me. I got my degree, my MBA, in international business and finance, and went on to work for some of the biggest companies in the world, including Bain Consulting, the big Bridge Bank Group, which is their nonprofit spinoff. And got to go to Lagos, Nigeria, where I was hanging out with the C-suite of Goldman Sachs as we rolled out the 10,000 employment initiative, where we were uplifting 10,000 women around the world, 10,000 Lucas owners. So my experience ranges from private sector to public sector, technology, strategy. I even opened up my own business in New York, where I was an MWVE, very proud woman, minority owned business. And I got to oversee the rollout of the MTA E-Tix program, which is the digitization of the largest subway in the world, certainly in America, but I believe it's in the world. And I was the liaison overseeing the deployment. I had to understand the needs of the unbanked in New York. I had to understand various populations and segments. Some of that I knew from just living in these Greensboro. Even though I grew up in Shannon Woods, I have family who grew up over in housing projects off of in my world. So I truly am a child of Greensboro. Now, when I decided to get married, have my kids, and living in New York, working a career, you know, I thought, you know, this is too much, right? The city was beautiful, it was wonderful, but I really didn't feel like I had what I needed for my children. And I wanted to go back to Greensboro. I wanted to take them to the city that raised me. I remembered the amazing schools. I remembered the feeling of safety. I remember being able to find affordable housing. And so we moved back after I took a job with Amazon Web Services globally and was a remote employee in Seattle. And I tell you that because I wanted to come back here. I could have gone anywhere, DC, Seattle, Texas, but I wanted to come back here to Greensboro. And when I came back, I realized the city that I left wasn't quite the same. It had grown, it was still beautiful and vibrant, and let me wrap it up because I'm winded. But my reason for running, I have the skill, the experience to deliver solutions, right? Not all experience is relevant, right? And I think that we need someone in city council who understands business, who understands site selection, who understands the need, not only the need for affordable housing, but how to improve processes within the city to get us where we need to be, to get the planning and the other things done in a reasonable, reasonable amount of time. So with that, I would like just to ask for your vote and thank you for your time, and I hope that you come out and vote for me in the primary.
Again, keep your opportunity. If you've got cards or you want to ask questions. Joyce, if anybody wants to write a question down, it would be a good time to pin this. Next up, we have Mr. Michael McKenney.
Good evening. I'm Michael McKenney, candidate for Greensboro City Council at Large, and I want to thank you for allowing me this opportunity to stand before you and share more about me with you and my platform and my ideas. I moved to Greensboro almost 40 years ago, and I have worked in this community ever since. I'm a banker by trade. I've been in finance and banking for over 30 years. You all remember CCP, the big community. You all remember CCP, the big community bank here in the city. We financed a lot of home construction, building neighborhoods, and stuff. I have a vast amount of experience working in the community. Currently, I'm the Chair of the Women Morde Commission, the National Commission that oversees all of the city vehicles, the Coliseum, Tanger Center, Piedmont Hall, Special Events Center, White Oak Amphitheater. In addition to that, I'm a deacon at Providence Baptist Church here in Greensboro, the oldest black church in West Carolina, we're a hundred and sixty years old. I'm married, thirty years, my wife, Paula, she's a retired pharmacist for CBS, many of you may have come through her traffic. We have one daughter, Georgia, she was just married, the first of August, so maybe I could save some money. In addition to that, I've served on the Minimum Standard Housing Commission, where we make sure that housing meets the minimum standard. I started my career as a realtor back in the eighties, under the flags of Better Homes and Gardens. And I've always been an advocate of the American dream, and the American dream is homeownership, something that we can leave for our family and our kids, while today is kind of out of reach for many. My platform is inclusive economic growth, attainable housing, public safety, and figuring out a way to keep our youth, or to have our youth, to choose Greensboro first as a place to live. And I'll start there. We have seven colleges and universities in this town, and we have a lot of young, bright, talented folk. When they graduate, will leave, and go get a job somewhere else, and pay taxes, and build a life someplace other than Greensboro. We have a task to make sure that we keep that talent here. Now, Greensboro is starting to boom economically. So, this year will be one of the most consequential elections you have witnessed in this city in your lifetime. There will be four to five seats that will turn over on the council, and it's important that we put people on there that understands government, that understands business and finance, that understands the need that we have around housing, and how we need to be able to retain our youth, how we need to expand our transportation, so that kids that are here now that don't have transportation can catch public transportation, can go to the grocery store, to the mall, to the movies, or wherever that may be. So, those are issues and challenges that we have to be faced with. At the end of the day, there's three seats and ten candidates. You have to choose three. I want to be one of them, being your voice on that council. Also, at the end of the day, no matter who you are, or how much experience you have or don't have, if you can't build consensus, then nothing will happen. You have to have five votes on that council to get everything, anything done. So, you need people on that council that can build consensus. I've been building consensus for forty years in this community. I helped raise funds on the National Civil Rights Museum campaign, I helped raise fifty billion dollars to save Bennett College when the door was about to close back in the early two thousand. I'm the co-founder of African American Leadership Initiative, founded in the early two thousand under United Way. And so, as you can see, for over forty years, I have been actively engaged. I work with the city now indirectly on a number of things. I'm currently the CEO of Piedmont Business Capital. We provide access to capital to small, low to moderate income businesses, because small businesses are the backbone of our economy. And as we continue to grow and boom in this city, we need to make sure that our small businesses, those that want to participate, can participate in this growing economy, inclusive growth. So, inclusive growth, economic development, attainable housing, public safety, and I know as we get older, we see people flying by, and my time is running down, but I got to get this part in. People are speeding. We need to be able to get the handle on that. And there's been a study that says roundabouts have shown to slow traffic down and reduce accidents. Greensboro has the opportunity to have more roundabouts in our city. So, I'm Michael McKinney, I'm running for Greensboro City Council at Large. I appreciate the opportunity to be here, you can visit my website, mckinneyforgs.com. Go, go, go. Thank you.
Thank you all for having us here this evening, and completely impressed how we are on time, so I'll make sure we stay that way. My name is Denise Roth, I'm running for Greensboro City Council at Large, and it has been my pleasure to call Greensboro home for the last twenty years. I moved here from DC and have had a tremendous opportunity to work across this community. When I first got here, I was actually working for a member of Congress, Brad Miller, and it was during a time when the textiles were leaving, and we were really going through a transition as a community. It gave me a really upfront opportunity to really know the people in this community, as well as the surrounding community, and watch that transformation happen. And what was true is that people just wanted to have good jobs to take care of their families, and wanted to have the opportunity to participate in the next industry. And that's something that I think is a part of the spirit of this community and reflective of what I've come to know. I went on to work for the Chamber of Commerce, in which I led the effort to raise funding for the Joint School of Nanoscience and Nanoeengineering. We raised seventy million dollars for that with the help of Senator Hagan at the time, Kate Hagan. Then I went on to the city, and at the city, I've had an opportunity to work on a number of areas, some that I'm really proud to see thriving today, including the framework for bringing online the Performing Arts Center, as well as the sustainable funding for the Civil Rights Museum, as well as putting in place the Coak of Vecima Avenue, moving the YMCA that is now in east Greensboro, across from the Gateway Gardens, the funding for the Gateway Gardens, and the Joint School of Nanoscience, of course, is across from there. I've just been proud to be able to call Greensboro home, to have this as the basis for my professional career, although I did start my career in DC, it's really weird, it was grounded here in Greensboro. And certainly, as city manager, I got to work with some of the colleagues here, as well as other members of council, as well as staff. I wouldn't have left if not for amazing opportunity to work for President Obama, and to work with him. I reported directly to President Obama and led the General Services Administration. That is the operational arm of government, in which we manage real estate procurement, technology, and on and on. It meant that I was spending time with our Department of Justice, and Health and Human Services, and Department of Transportation, on helping them achieve their goals, working on matters like the adoption of policy related to police cameras, and body worn cameras, and policy related to children of migrants coming across the water on their own. After leaving the administration, I had a chance to work across the country. I actually went to an engineering firm, an infrastructure firm, which I led a group of about five hundred strategists, it was like a McKinsey inside of an engineering firm. And we've worked with mayors, and governors, and states across the country, to advise on how they actually bring infrastructure online, everything from the data concepts to the design and engineering, to the big picture planning. And today, I still do that work, both advising leaders here in this community, as well as communities across the country. And it's that work that I look to bring back. You know, the question is, why, why would I run for office, and why would I run for City Council at Large? And the answer is very simple, we're at a very tremendous time for our community, and either it can be an opportunity or a risk. I see the opportunity as creating career paths for young people, ensuring that our community's growing, but has smart growth as a priority, and really thinking about how that growth impacts our community, and wanting to ensure that we're maintaining our neighborhoods, which we have beautiful neighborhoods, while that growth happens. And then, also thinking about where the opportunities are in the future. What are the jobs that come behind the jobs that we can see today? What are the suppliers that come and that support those industries? What do those new career paths look like for our young people? That's where I see our opportunity. And having done that work, doing that work today with communities across the country, as well as here in Greensboro, is something I'm very proud of. I currently am serving as interim CEO for Habits Happy Humanity, I'm advising the Chancellor at North Atlanta, A&amp;T, I advise community foundations, I'm working closely on all of these issues that face our community today. And I will commit to you, if I have your vote, and I hope to have your vote, starting with early voting tomorrow, we didn't say that part. But if I have your vote, I can commit to you that I will bring all of my net work and experience to bear, to ensure that as our community transitions, that it does it in a way that is inclusive of all of our community here. I look forward to your questions, thank you.
It's funny, I just saw this today, I got a text message, it was like my 202 number, from DC, and it was Denise Roth. So, that's legit, she comes from DC. But that concludes our individual presentations from each one of us. We, people that haven't had an opportunity to turn your questions in, please do that, you have them?
We're going to bring your questions in a second.
Okay, they're working on those right now.
Can I say that either kids are good timer, or we call them direction?
He's just scary.
Well, I just want to say that, as teaching public school for many years, I've always tried to be as political as possible, and I'm retired, I can tell you. But I'm so impressed by the background, and the service and dedication, and the expertise we have up here before us. We don't have, we don't have four choices, we can take it all. They're working on putting those together, and then, yes.
I'll make a comment?
Yes, dear.
I wanted to point out, this is where the tax dollars go, Lily Recreation Center is part of the Greensboro budget, I assume, I'm not sure where, but as you can see, the place is packed. On the other end, we're in basketball court, we're having leopard training tonight, but please keep us in the park and Sunset Hills, give your thoughts, and we go to do the next budget. Now you know where some of that money goes.
Hopefully, everyone will look, FYI, notion, I saw that York County Association of Educators and C of RNC are also holding another candidate forum at the Congregational Christian Church on Radiance Drive, and I call it the River Peoples Temple, where the people used to be on, that's going to be on October the thirteenth, it'll be after the primary, so we'll have a narrow downfield, we hope to see four candidates there, folks from Sunset Hills and from Holy Park, but hopefully, we'll have the opportunity to see folks further on, down the line there for sure. My question distillers are working, I'm a bit cold. Yes, sir, Ms. McKinney?
Can I make one comment?
Yes, sir.
When I moved here forty years ago, you got to know, the first place I moved was right here on the corner of Willybrook and Green Garden. Forty years ago.
All righty, we have, so, who got next session, we're going to do this for a few minutes. Here's the questions that have come to us, and we're going to give each of you a minute, we'll go reverse Alvin and the Walrus, and Ms. Roth will talk with you, I don't know if you're fancy football, anyway. So, what are your strategies to increase housing supply, but also the present quality of neighborhoods, specifically single-family owner occupied homes?
Thank you for that question. I think that the strategy for increasing our housing supply really does need to think about density, as well as where our housing is going. And that's why the combination of thinking about the, keeping our traditional neighborhoods intact while inviting in growth is going to be very essential. Something I will say to you, you'll hear me say many times over, some of the solutions we're solving for, it is not the first time communities have faced them, so I am confident that we can find approaches that we can be able to invite in. I also think that we need to think about housing in terms of different price points, as well as different styles of housing. We have people that want to age in place, but are often having to move out of their communities because of lack of accessible housing that's safe and that is accommodating for them. We have young families that are starting that, to have to choose neighborhoods in which they're going to live, as opposed to being able to choose across the city. I'll also say, from an affordable housing standpoint, I think it's really important for us to consider where our affordable housing is today, but where it also needs to be in the future. Where are the jobs going to go? Where are the people going to move? Thinking about the airport, as well as down toward twenty-one, we need to be diverse in our thinking about the pricing of homes and where it's located.
Thank you, Ms. Roth.
Thank you. So, the housing crisis we're in is not new to this country, everybody's facing this crisis. And so, we're all talking about attainable housing. What's attainable to you may not be attainable to you or attainable to me. That's mixed-income houses, mixed uses, right? And spreads out. And they're early, in the late eighties, early nineties, Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac government agencies really promoted affordable housing by creating a product called ninety-seven percent loan to value, three percent down. The idea was that affordable housing would be spread out across the community, so it's not burdensome in one particular area. And then, somewhere along the way, affordable housing became confused with low-income housing. There's a big difference between affordable housing and low-income housing. So, in an effort to clear that up, we started talking about attainable housing, so that we can make sure that we express that very clearly. Here in Greensboro, there not even been any more land, so the land that we have is gone. So, how do we solve this problem? We're in need of thirty-five, or forty, maybe fifty, or even more, thousands of homes. So, we have to start looking inward and work out, oh, it's time to stop, we have to work inward and work our way out. And so, the middle market is what's missing, right? And the middle market is single, single-family apartment duplexes, triplexes, and quadplexes that is genetically matching the characteristics of the neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. Roth.
I felt the mention earlier that I'm also the CEO of the Greensboro Housing Coalition, a nonprofit that advocates for fair, safe, healthy, and affordable housing. I have the benefit of working with the Housing Coalition, and the micro local housing, also the City Council, and the macro local housing, so I have a broad view of what's going on. The housing prices we're in is a national issue, it's not here locally. We have to do some, some simple things. We need forty-eight thousand, so we need somebody to come and build. So, we're investing in ICAP, in the Institute for Minority Economic Development, to help us bring more developers in. We need more of the skilled trades. Thank goodness for Guilford County Schools and CTE Program, leveraging that, leveraging their GTCC, leveraging Guilford Works, NC Works, Next Gen, to get the skills up. Then we need to get, make sure that the folks can afford to be there. That goes back to that economic development piece, you got to have the resources to be in. Some folks won't always be there, that's why you have down payment assistance programs that we just doubled from City Council, because we realized that there's an issue with the announcement by your fellow. Talking world peace in sixty seconds.
I spoke too early, but yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Franklin.
So, solutions, solutions are something I love to dive into as a consultant. And when we're talking about the housing crisis, it is national, but what's really acute here in Greensboro is the fact that, you know, we have a lot of middle-class people who really need this housing, and incomes are not where they, where they used to be. So, affordable housing is a crucial issue. We also have companies coming in here. Now, the estimates I've seen are that we need about fifty-three thousand units, and that, you know, we now have this planned at ten thousand, which the city manager created, but that's inadequate, right? It doesn't even account for all of the other jobs and things that will be associated with the increased units that we're going to need. So, when we talk about, you know, solutions, my, you know, my thoughts are increase housing density. We need to get, you know, some more smartly built, high-density projects, like Charlotte, like Raleigh. We also need to improve our housing process. It is a mess, and process improvement is probably needed throughout the city. We also need to lower taxes, and it's not, it's doable, especially if we look for areas of inefficiency within the current budget, which doubled in the past ten years, while our population has only gone up thirty percent. There's a lot of inefficiency happening everywhere in the city, and in the city, and we need a consultant to fix that.
Ms. Ellen McCall?
As I look out over this audience, where our housing starts is with you. At least sixty percent of the folks in this audience are seniors. And when I was on the council before, it took seven years for me to finally get us to do, what to do with the house for homeowners. In District One, I would see houses become vacant because families didn't plan them. And then, whenever the families that were left couldn't manage the property, what would happen? It would become to the point where we would have to go in and sometimes tear it down. So, then you started seeing these holes in neighborhoods. So, you know, we can talk about the big plan, but please do your plan. Please have those conversations so that your house, your housing stopped, because, you know, you just look at it as, well, that's my home. But it's more than that. It's more than that. Your house gets looked at whenever it's time to bring other incentives into your community. So, let's start with your home, and what you can do to help us to do more with housing. Thank you.
So, attainable and affordable housing, our process for approvals throughout the city had to change, we've got to expedite it, time is money. Infrastructure to support housing developments that are more affordable, we've got to extend our infrastructure. And I'm interested in exploring best practices And, uh, I'm interested in exploring best practices on zoning and alternative housing options from others. I don't want to reinvent the wheel, I want to take best practices and copy them. So that includes more density, different housing products that make it more affordable. I'm V. Kim.
And we'll do one more question, then we'll take a two-minute break and get you to interact. Mr. McGinn will be ready, now you're, we're reversing the order again. For all the candidates, how can you justify spending fifty-plus million dollars on Greensboro Transit Authority when the revenue is less than four million dollars?
Thank you for that question, that is a tough question. I, I served on the GTA years ago, um, and, uh, you know, we need public transportation in the, uh, in the community, and a lot of that, uh, funding comes from federal funding. Uh, I don't know the specifics of it, um, you know, it's, uh, it's, it's, it's something that we need to explore, I mean, I, I got an I-oh there. Uh, when I was on GTA, because a lot of money does flow through there, it is a lot of federal money, um, it's never going to pay for itself. Uh, I don't know if it pays for itself in any community, so, uh, I'm, I'm interested in seeing how we spend money on everything if it's Greensboro dollars and how we can better spend it and be more efficient.
Mass transit was never intended to be able to pay for itself. So, you know, let's go there first and be honest, it wasn't, okay? But we need, I mean, if you think about it, if we were to charge, uh, riders what the cost was, nobody would be riding, because it would be too expensive. Greensboro is a very benevolent city, so we, we actually did SCAT, that's what it was called then, the Specialized Transportation. We did that for the whole city, we were only required to do it within a quarter mile of an existing, uh, bus stop. So we, we, the city, decided that we wanted to make sure that we provided, uh, mass transit. It has improved, I used to be the liaison for GT, uh, GTA, as well as for Park. And look at what we've grown here, it has impacted on our quality of life, because if you, if people aren't driving, it, it, you know, it impacts on your air quality. So we needed to make a decision. Do you want to have something like that, or do you want people to have to walk?
Franklin.
Question was, what is the excuse for fifty million dollars?
Fifty mil, how do you justify fifty million dollar expenditure with four million dollars in revenue?
You don't justify it. And yes, public transportation, and I've lived all over, uh, Charlotte, Austin, um, Philly, uh, New York, public transportation is a public good, it's a public utility. But there needs to be some type of return on investment. I mean, the, the, the bus should at least show up on time. The bus should at least go places where our student population, our elderly population needs to go, and it doesn't. The app, the tracking app, I mean, again, I'm in technology, it should work, and it doesn't, right? So I think the challenge is, you don't justify it when you're used to going back and dipping in the taxpayers' pockets to get more money. I come from an industry where, and again, on the nonprofit side, because I've done nonprofit work with Richmond Group, you still had to justify the, the expenditure to the, you know, the beneficiary, right? There had to be some type of, you know, benefit. There's no benefit to, to our current system, and we need to invent a problem.
We are our brother's keeper. The city of Greensboro, the entire city, we are a customer service organization. I don't care what you're talking about with police and fire and all this other stuff. When it comes down to the bare bones of it, we're a customer service organization, and each of you, and each resident, and each visitor is our customer. Is it going to make sense, is everything that we do is going to make financial sense? No, but we do need to provide access to our residents, these jobs that are coming in, they may not have access right now, but, but that bus system will get them there. That bus system, which can be improved, and we've made some improvements, Crossmax Purple from East Wendover all the way down. Cross, Crossmax Purple going north-south coming up, we're making strides there, but we can't cut off our residents, our customers at the knees, because the money doesn't make sense right now. It's going to make sense, we have to be there for them now and in the future.
Mr. McGinn.
How do we justify four million in revenue versus fifty million cost? Well, I'm just, I'm just a simple banker, banker. And here's my thing, public transportation is an ancillary service that I think all cities need to provide to the citizens. The question is, how do we justify it? Well, if the system can't make enough revenue to support itself, then you might have to look at other alternative revenue streams that can help support it. And at the same time, look at how efficient the, the transportation system is. Make it sure that we have buses that may be green, so that the cost of fuel and those things can reduce the cost of operating those. So we have to maximize, uh, our opportunity to reduce the cost to run those systems, and then look for alternative revenue streams that can help support the cost of those systems, while looking for opportunity to cut expenses that may not be needed.
And, Miss Robb.
Thank you, um, you know, two things I'll say, one is, um, over COVID, a lot of the rider systems across the country went down. And the, uh, the, the need to adjust to that change in usage of bus systems is really important. Um, our ability to ensure that our routes are actually going where people need to be, when they need to be there, is, is something that would help us from a funding standpoint. Um, it would probably help to adjust some of that reality that we're seeing from the budget cost. But overall, what's gonna say, I think is important, that we do need to provide a bus system as a service, but we do need to think about it differently. Where, and again, where are jobs going to go, where are people actually, uh, living, and how they access those jobs would be important. I smiled when Michael said one thing about the EV buses, this is an aside, um, the federal funding for the infrastructure for EVs has gone away. And the funding specifically for cities to be able to put in place for the buses that they bought, which the city is one of them, has gone away as well. I don't mean to get national, but the reality is, is that there is a, a pressure that's also happening in that respect that we need to adjust for as well.
Thanks, Robb. And folks, we've got a couple of questions here, we'll have a little two-minute break, folks can mix around, maybe go do whatever, and then we'll bring up our candidates for District Four. And thank you, folks, for coming out today.
A little more specificity for this one. We're going to interlock you with our District Four candidates. We're trying to ask some questions that are focused on how their vision with the district specifically and overall with the city, how that interacts with the city goals. What do you think our pressing needs are here in our district, District Four, and for the city at large? Also, how do you plan to address those? And I can't let this go without thanking Nancy Hoffman for 14 very good years she's put in for District Four for us. So we've got a new representative for District Four. I'd like to introduce our two District Four candidates tonight, Mr. Vicky Smith and Mr. Adam Marshall. We're going to have to get Adam Marshall to stand up.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. Adam Marshall, and I was born and raised right here in Greensboro. Actually, I've lived in District Four my entire life. I went to Starburger, Kaiser, and Greensleeve. Sorry, Richard. It's our time. Let us have our moment. This is where I came home after law school. This is where my wife and I are raising our family. Greensboro is extremely important to me. I want to be part of the process of keeping us moving forward. I'm sorry. I'm a partner at a law firm, at Law Firm Carolinas. And as an attorney, we deal with complex issues every day. I represent HOAs and condos throughout North Carolina. So I can promise you, if there is anything that is preparing me for politics, it is representing HOAs and condos throughout North Carolina. Currently, I serve on the Greensboro ABC board, which is not as glamorous as it sounds, but it is an $80 million business. And we gave $2.5 million to the city of Greensboro last year and over $200,000 to entities that deal with mental health and addiction. And I've served on many boards of the commission. I've been on the Human Relations Commission for adjustment, six years on the zoning commission, which I chair, and also the Greensboro Criminal Justice Advisory Commission, which I also chair. So when you're applying for a job like city council, who wouldn't want to learn as much as you can about the job before you have it? I am committed to acting in the common good for all of our citizens. Yes, I will be representing District Four, but we need to elect council members who can work collaboratively with each other to get things done for the residents in District Four and the city of Greensboro. When we have a complex issue or a controversial issue, yeah, I want to have pop-up meetings so that I can hear from you and you can hear from me, and then I can take those things back to council. We've got to continue recruiting businesses that are going to pay good wages, employ our citizens, and bring folks here for work. But to do that, we've got to make investments in our critical infrastructure. It's not sexy, but it is essential. We have to invest in our water and sewer, make sure it has the capacity for growth. And that's not just for the businesses or for the homes that are coming. And so that our fire department, our ISO rated and accredited fire department, can tap in and make sure they can provide the level of service that they need to. We need to continue to leverage the airport as a true economic driver in Greensboro. It really is a mega site. We've been searching for a manufacturing identity in Greensboro for decades, and we really are becoming an aerospace manufacturing city. We just announced Jet Zero, which is bringing 14,000 jobs to Greensboro. That is North Carolina's biggest job commitment to date. That is a game changer. We also have to support our small businesses, providing an atmosphere where they can succeed, supporting business incubators like Launch Greensboro, which works with these entrepreneurs to get their businesses off the ground and, most importantly, seek investment capital so that they can get their jobs going. Housing is such an important issue in Greensboro, and it's well known that we are over 30,000, again, probably 40,000 or 50,000 units short. And District Four is such a diverse district, and the district's goals really match the city's goal. We've got to have attainable housing, housing that you can afford with the salary that you make. And we need a diverse set of products. We need single-family homes, townhomes, condominiums, apartments, and affordable housing. We don't just need it in one particular district. We need it throughout our city. So what can we do to help that? We can reduce red tape. We can make our permitting inspection and technical review process leaner and more efficient. We can work with developers to be innovative in their products. We can incentivize things like when they build a new mixed-use development, dedicating a portion of that product to market rent or affordable housing so that others can get into that community. We have to have the housing that allows our children and grandchildren to live in Greensboro and afford a place to live. Public safety, we have to support our first responders, making sure they're well-trained, fully staffed, and receiving competitive pay. I've been endorsed by both the Police Officers Association and the firefighters, professional firefighters of Greensboro. They know that they have a partner in me, and they know that I am also somebody that can help bridge and build trust with the community and their departments. And just today, I was endorsed by the Dilfer County Community PAC, which is founded by Dr. Curtis Brown Jr., whose mission is to move Greensboro forward on housing, safety, equity, and inclusive growth. And I'm honored to have that endorsement. Guys, governing is not a business. There are no CEOs on city council. We all have one vote. It is a team sport, and we all have to work together as nine council members to get things done. We need to elect leaders that can work together intelligently and collaboratively to move Greensboro forward. What you will get in me is someone that listens, someone who does your homework, and someone who works to get the job done for you. Thank you.
I'll give you a question you want to put to our District Four candidates. We have cards here. If anybody wants to put in another question, this is an opportunity to do so. And now I'd like to introduce Mr. Vicky Smith.
Well, originally, I was told it was two minutes a night, so now it's seven minutes a night. So I'm stretching my speech a little bit. So I was born in Chapel Hill, North Carolina. Any target for you tonight? My family, and I've been here since 1985. I moved my business here in '85 and started that business here in Greensboro. For more than 40 years, I've run businesses, successful businesses, hired people, hired people, fired people, and made difficult decisions that I have to make in a small business to grow to be a larger business. I bring the same practical experience, this simple goal. We need to make our neighborhoods safe, number one. We need to bring, have a cleaner community, a safer, cleaner neighborhood, and we need to have a safer place to live with our communities. Linnley Park is a neighborhood that is surrounded by parks and a long commitment to community involvement. And I'm proud of y'all for being so involved in the community. It's very rare and unique in any city that you have such committed community like you are today. You have green spaces that are parked that make this area special. Greensboro, beautiful sunset, is a historic tree-lined neighborhood, and active neighbors who care about their parks and their streets. When you, like me, I will focus on three things that will matter to your daily lives. Number one, we will have reliable safety in our community. And Mr. Phillips, I think, is outside the door here. I've known him for a long time, a police officer. We have got to bring the pay rates up to our police officers at Greensboro. We can't continue to have him working second and third jobs in Greensboro. We need well-maintained roads and streets. I know the potholes are in your streets. I know that when I left my home today, I bumped into one of those potholes. We've got to fix our streets, and we've got to fix our street lights so we have a safer neighborhood. At City Hall, we must listen and act responsibly and respect the citizens who speak to us because we represent the people of the community. I'm asking you to represent, asking you to vote for me so I can represent you in City Council so you don't have to come to city council meetings and speak on your own behalf. I will be your voice in City Council, every one of you. My record as a long-term business owner in Greensboro enables me to balance budgets effectively by maintaining a focus on service. I will work with neighborhood groups like yours to protect tree canopies like I did for the Bazaar Friendly Avenue Initiative that you may have read about or seen in the past. I want to support safe walkways. I want this to be a welcoming community for all families, both seniors and first-time homeowners. I will work to serve you. I will listen. I will show up. I will get things done for Linnley Park and Sunset Hills. I thank you for your time and your stress tonight and for your vote. And I know my time's not up yet, so I'll go back to some of my background. I didn't grow up in Greensboro like some people did here in the room. I came to Greensboro in 1985 as an entrepreneur, and I've continued to grow, grow, and build businesses for all that time. I grew up and went to Sun in a small town just close to us. My family's lived here all their life. My father-in-law went to Grandly High School, known as Greensboro High School back then. My wife went there, and my daughter went there. She's now a graduate of Chapel Hill. I am not a career politician, as you can tell. This is my first year getting into politics. But back in 2021, if Mr. Hosh was still here, I would remind him, I ran, I put my name in the hat to be on City Council in 2021. I failed that attempt, and then again, failed again this past year. I've wanted to be in public service for a long time, and timing is right for a lot of things in the people's lives. In my life right now today, I am in a place in my business leadership, my business ownership, I can tap the brakes a little bit, step away from it, and be a servant to the community, which I want to be. I want to be your servant in this community of District Four. And I ask your vote, and I thank you very much.
We appreciate it. Now, we've got a few questions we've generated from the group here. Mr. Urban, how are you, sir? Let's cross the hall, be you and me. First question is, what preventative or restorative care do you propose to support our neighbors that struggle with homelessness or housing? Two is fine. Mr. Martin.
Well, homelessness, and kind of like housing, is a national issue. It's an issue that's affecting Greensboro also. And we have to be compassionate with these folks that are struggling, but we also have to understand that we have business owners, especially downtown, that are trying to run their businesses successfully. I was downtown a couple weeks ago, and there was a gentleman that was asleep in the doorway with his feet in the sidewalk. We have to be able to get these folks to areas where they can get the help that they need. There are a lot of good organizations in Greensboro that do this kind of work. We need to bring them together. We need them to have a unified vision so that we can help folks that are struggling. I went to visit the Sanctuary House downtown, which is a center that helps with mental health, gives folks a place to congregate, socialize, work in the house, and hopefully helps prevent them from becoming homeless themselves.
Give a minute.
The homeless issue in Greensboro is nothing is a surprise to anyone. I was on the original partners for ending homelessness about 13 years ago, and with Johan Bennett, United Way, involved in that. Unfortunately, our initiative at that point was to end homelessness in 10 years. Unfortunately, we did fail, and we still have a problem today. I want to categorize the homeless situation we have into two buckets, if I could, please. And I don't want to put people in buckets, but we have a chronic problem over here with mental health issues. There are private agencies in Greensboro that can help the people that have drug abuse issues, with substance abuse, that have mental illness, whether it be schizophrenia or whatever it might be they have a problem with. You put them over here on this side of the year. They need to be helped in a different way than the people over here that have been displaced because of their situation in life. You can't put them all into one bucket, and unfortunately, the city of Greensboro has put everybody in one bucket. And we've got to separate those buckets into two areas. The mental health issue with homelessness, I'm sorry, I don't have time, and separately, how we get people into homes.
And the next question we have, and I think it's kind of an adjunct to this, is what ways can we promote home ownership and less investor leasing rentals? I know the B and B crowd is invading a lot of our neighborhoods here, buying up properties and kind of changing those to Airbnb's. So how would you address that one, Mr. Marshall?
Can you repeat that question?
It's like, how can we promote home ownership, more on ownership, and at the same time, less investors who are coming in and buying up properties and turning them into Airbnb's? I know that's been a particular problem.
We absolutely need to promote home ownership. We need to do things like first-time home buyer assistance so we can help folks get into housing. As far as the Airbnb issue, I was on the task force that helped draft the ordinance to help manage Airbnb's. Airbnb's are here, and it's part of our economy. But at the time, Greensboro didn't have anything to address it. So we worked diligently to try to get an ordinance in place, which was adopted by council, that hopefully is helping to manage that situation for the residents. I know we have a lot of it here in Linnley Park. There was at one point a spacing requirement, but that had to go because of the challenges with lawsuits. But having that ordinance in place puts us with other cities of our size that can help manage that issue.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Mr. Smith?
Good question, and I'm sorry.
It's a, it doesn't have to be.
So I think that the situation with first-time home buyers here in Greensboro, and I worry about my daughter buying her first home. She's going to have to come up with a very large down payment to buy her first home in Greensboro if she decides to come back to Greensboro. Last night, and I don't go to all the city council meetings, but last night, the city council voted to build on the Regency Hotel site some homeless, not homeless, but low-income housing projects that I think is one movement towards getting people into their first apartment or their first home. That needs to be more than just apartments, and needs to be more broadly across the city in townhomes, in first-time homes. And I think the city can do some things to incentivize, as it was said in the earlier conversation with the city council at large, we can look at federal money and state money for first-time home buyers for young couples and older couples that need to buy and move into Greensboro.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And thank you to our District Four council candidates who have shown up. We're going to give them a break here. We'll be back in a minute. One more, two more, mayoral candidates. In about 10 minutes. Thank you, folks.
All of these things I've learned by being with them. So, you know, that we've talked a little bit about sustainability. I am very proud that in sustainability, I brought it forward to have an office of sustainability. What that did is help reduce energy efficiency or help make energy efficient departments. And I'm proud to say that we had a goal of making our city, let's see, it was forty percent energy efficient with gas emissions by the year 2025, and we have surpassed that. Our departments have reduced energy consumption by forty-two percent. So, all of those things, we have sustainability, we have crime and safety, you know, all of those things. We want to feel safe. So, what do I see as the vision for Greensboro? I want us to continue on this trajectory of success. I've been there talking to the jet zero people. I've been there talking to the Publix people. I've been there on the ground. And if anybody tells you they did this or that, no. It's collaboration. We all have to collaborate together. I work with the Chamber of Commerce. And let's talk regional real quick. So, I am Chair of the Piedmont Authority for Regional Transportation. Think of that. Elected officials from ten counties elected me Chair because I run efficient meetings. I get to the point. We don't sit around and discuss for hours. I have meetings and they re-elected me as Chair for five years. So, the first time I walked into the back room, I was wondering, okay, what do I know about transportation? So, I've learned a lot. And I am ravenous about research. I don't stop. I've touched transportation regionally. We have buses that go from goodness, the Copeland Transportation Center all the way to Chapel Hill so people can get jobs, so they have jobs in hospitals. They come through Greensboro. This is something someone brought up to me earlier this evening. We need more efficiency. And those are things that I can lead a new council into looking at. We need to look at all those things because Greensboro needs to be efficient so that we can do all the things we need to do. Housing, yes. We just passed where we can have accessory dwelling units. So, what do I want to see in the future? I know of some innovative solutions in building products. Now, I want to bring that to council, have the builders look at it. That is my goal, bring in the builders and the developers and everyone. What can we do to streamline everything for you so you can build these houses? So, you can maybe not have to spend so much money doing gutters. You know, a lot of times, we need gutters, don't get me wrong. But, you know, sometimes there's cost efficiency that we can look at as a city and we can collaborate with them to make things a lot safer, a lot quicker, and to do all the things we want to do. So, my goal and my vision is to make Greensboro the best city it can be and to allow the city to grow, stay on its trajectory of success, and make sure that every resident who wants can thrive in the city of Greensboro. Because that is what we all want. We want to be able to have our families here. We want to be able to raise our children here. We want to do all those things. And true, it's true, if we don't have a safe city, we're not going to be able to do that. If we don't have the infrastructure, we're not going to be able to do that. And I certainly will pursue that trajectory of success and lead a new council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edwina. Next, we have attorney and district judge. I just found out tonight, or today, that the hospital legal teacher, good friend of mine, Evan Post. So, we all know Evan. Mr. Mark Cummings. Thank you, sir.
All right, so it is seven fifty at night. If you're happy and you know it, clap your hands. If you're scared and you know it, clap your hands. We are a more divided nation right now, but we're also a divided city. I'm running for mayor because I think Greensboro can be better. I think Greensboro can be better when we utilize what we have in each other, working for each other. My name is Omar Cummings. I'm a Greensboro boy. I grew up off of Phillips Avenue in the northeastern part of Greensboro. I went through public schools. I graduated from James Benson Dudley High School. From there, I went on to Sawani, the University of the South, and then to Campbell for law school. I came back to Greensboro after working for Congressman John Lewis of Georgia in DC, where I got to work on what became the African-American Museum of History and Culture. My job was to get cosponsors. And one of the things that I learned working in Washington DC is that sometimes good ideas fall by the wayside because it's determinative on who made the idea. I'm running for mayor because I believe it doesn't matter where the idea comes from. If it's common sense and it helps everyone, then that's where we should go. I'm running for a mayor because I have faced adversity. I was the youngest partner of a reputable firm. I was the youngest president of the Guilford County Black Lawyers Association. I was the first African-American general counsel of the Greensboro J.C.s. And I was the youngest African-American male district court judge elected in Guilford County, running on a campaign of together, we could balance the scales. And yes, I did step down as judge. Because at that time, I was scared. What it did is it transformed me, prepared me to be your mayor because right now Greensboro needs a fighter. And that's what you will get from a Mayor Mark administration. How are we going to do it? First, let's return government back to its people. This is one of the best cities in this country, the third largest in the state. But somewhere along the line, the gateway city became the gated city, where your voice doesn't matter down at city council, where special interests determines what makes the agenda. I want to change that, how by building consensus, not by trying to go along to get along, but by educating, by bringing people along on ideas that present a bold new era of leadership. Let me thank the seniors here in this room, those who have been in Greensboro for twenty-plus, fifteen-plus years. You have built something that has been great, that has a lot of potential. But now, my generation, it is our turn to turn the page, to take Greensboro now to become the best city in this state, and we can do it. This is how. First, affordability has to be the primary focus of the mayor. No longer can the mayor just be concerned with trash pickup and making sure that the buses are running. National problems require local solutions. We are seeing the things that happen in Washington DC go into our communities. We are seeing for the first time military deployed in our cities. We are seeing people scared to go to church, to go to school, to pick their parents up from doctor's appointments. Why? Because the problems that happen in DC are no longer staying there. They're coming here, and you need a mayor who has the strength and the conviction to stand up for you in the face of tyranny from anyone, no matter what the party is. That is what a Mayor Mark administration will bring to you. Someone unafraid, who has been tried to stand up and actually lead. Second, we have five colleges and universities in Greensboro. With every made like clockwork, we lose a lot of that intellectual capital because there's nothing keeping them here. Our administration will create the Earn Here, Earn Here program, designed, designed to keep individuals here. Who are the innovators of tomorrow? Innovation, technology, and creation is happening in our dorm rooms. Facebook was created inside of a dorm room. We need to keep our intellectual capital here. Open up capitalization for these individuals to help them build their business. Secondly, creating a senior citizens resource center. Now, today, there has been cuts in the way that our seniors can access Medicare and Social Security. We should be the ones designing programs to help our seniors access those programs. Again, a mayor's job can no longer just be that about garbage pickup. Lastly, it takes leadership to build consensus. And not just for consensus sake, but because we care about every person that calls Greensboro home. I have twin girls who are at Pierce Elementary, Addison and Nevee. For the first time, they have less rights, our children have less rights than we had. That's unacceptable. The solution to that problem has to start here locally. Thirdly, and lastly, you are the most intelligent-looking crowd that I have seen. And so, no one can ever accuse you of being insane. But the definition of insanity is doing the same thing, but expecting a different result. My competitors have already had an opportunity to serve for lots of years. They tell you every, it used to be two years, but now four years, that they are going to change the very thing that they told you four years ago that they were going to change, that they were going to make the very advancements that they told you four years they were going to make. The time is now, the time now to usher in a new era of bold leadership. And I'm asking for your support to do that. Thank you so much.
If you have any questions that you would like to ask any of the mayoral candidates, we have cards we can distribute around. Also, just don't forget, we have a table in the back for campaign literature from folks that have been here or haven't been here. So, if you want to access that stuff before you go, if you want to investigate your candidates, please go ahead and do so. And last but not least, former mayor Robbie Perkins.
Thank you. My name is Robbie Perkins, and I'm running for mayor of the city of Greensboro again. I haven't been mayor for twelve years. But when I was defeated by Nancy Vaughn twelve years ago, I was quoted in the paper saying that the only elected office that I would ever run for again was mayor of the city of Greensboro. Because I served sixteen years on our council and two years of mayor. And we got a lot of things done when I was mayor of the city of Greensboro. We didn't raise taxes. We acted with a sense of urgency. We bought the ground that the Tiger Center now stands on. We worked together as a community to get things done. My police chief is a guy named Ken Miller. And if you looked on some of my media, you'll see Ken's positive comments about me as a mayor because I stood right with our police department. Now, I haven't been there for twelve years, but what have I been doing for twelve years? Taking other leadership positions within our community. Served as the president of Tribic, Triad Real Estate Business Coalition for two years, right off of council. And we write in that organization, and I think I've been to several council meetings when real estate issues were brought up, and somebody in the council raised their hand and says, what does Tribic think about this? So, yes, I am well versed in all of the economic development issues. I've been in the real estate, commercial real estate business for forty-six years. And one of the deals I've worked on while I was out of office was a little distribution center on the east side of town called Publix. And we didn't know it was Publix, but we kind of guessed it was. And I drove to Lawrenceville, Georgia, and I looked at their distribution center down there, driving around because you couldn't get in it. And I made the call back home. I said, if this is what we're looking at in our community, we've got to get it because it will change the nature of our community. Now, one of the reasons Publix landed here was because of our location. We've got interstate highways, five interstates, got a great airport. We've got, we're a transportation hub. And they told me after they did that deal that the reason they did it was it saved them on full build-out, when they're fully built out, eighteen million truck miles a year versus the next competitive site. Greensboro, North Carolina is in the right place, and we are in the right time. And we need strong leadership in the mayor level in order to take it to the next level. We've got a lot of good things in our community, wonderful things going in our community. But we've got to get ahead of what I see as a huge growth spurt in here. You guys live in established neighborhoods. You're between Wendover Avenue and downtown. So, you're kind of in isolated areas, most of us built out. Not going to be a huge amount of change. But we're going to change. You don't announce fourteen thousand jobs at the airport. You don't announce Toyota with fifty-two hundred jobs. You don't have all of the others coming in here without substantial change. So, we've got to address the basic issues, the three or four base, three or four basic issues that I want to hit hard. Public safety, yes, we've got to be fully staffed. We shouldn't get to a crisis point before we give our police officers a raise. We shouldn't do that when we recognize we're already going in the wrong direction. Shouldn't be a crisis. Housing, we are twenty thousand affordable housing units behind right now. How are we going to go ahead and pick it up? I think the city of Greensboro made a pretty good hire last week. Phillip Winston Salem came over, Samuel Hunter. He's over here now. They've done some great things in Winston. We don't have a building problem for affordable housing units, the large two hundred unit complexes. We've got ten of the best builders in the southeast all headquartered here. They can build the stuff. It's a financing problem. Because in order to take it from market rate to affordable, you've got to put a pot of money in there so that you can reduce the rents to something people can afford. So, we can do that. I understand housing, I understand the tax credit process, understand how those applications are made, how those buildings are financed, how they're delivered, and who lives in them. We've got to put the pedal to the metal on that because we're behind it. Another thing I'd like to see done, I'd like to see us hit the rehab piece hard. You know, Gene Brown and his organization does about a million three a year in rehab in our city. What would it be like if they had four million dollars to deal with? Could they scale it? Could they bring people into neighborhoods and do it on an income-based sliding scale? So, if you don't have any money, but your house is rundown, you're going to get a better deal than the person that has a lot of money. But we start building these established neighborhoods back, piece by piece, day by day. And once people see things happening positively in their neighborhood, the folks with money say, you know, maybe I ought to fix my house up too. Raises the whole level of the housing stock in Greensboro. Lastly, we've got to hit planning and infrastructure. You know, we really don't have a good enough plan as to what's going to go between the city limits of Greensboro and the Toyota mega site. We don't have the infrastructure in place, we don't have a plan. We kind of got a little bit, but we've got to really reach out and work with our Guilford County Commission, folks in Randolph County, to make all this happen. And I, for one, am going to put heavy, heavy emphasis on infrastructure, water, sewer, roads, transportation, to make that happen. I've been mayor before, and I will be a better mayor the next time. I've had the experience, I've had my ups and downs. I'm on my ups, and we're going to be able to do this together as one community in an efficient way. No learning curve here. But Robbie Perkins for mayor. Thank you so much.
There's a question coming in. It kind of reminds me, I'm really excited about the direction Greensboro is going as you've been around it all these years. I've been here, called it, I just call it the window, an old name. And I think we need to rebrand that. We're the Greater Greensboro Open for Business. I'm branding that.
I like that.
But, you know, it's funny to think, growing up here in this area, that we're not a textile and tobacco town. You told me that about forty years ago when I was growing up here, going to Chapel Hill. Never thought we would have to make that transition. It's been difficult. I think we're getting ready to go. Let me see what our questions are. We'll have that in a moment further. So, our first question for all the mayoral candidates, and we'll start with Ms. Abuzuea. How will you address accountability conflicts of interest and serve all of Greensboro's people, not just those of power and money and influence?
Personally, I have no ego and I have no agenda, other than to want Greensboro to be able to thrive, to listen to every single person in Greensboro. On my cards, on all of my advertising, I have my personal number on there. And I do either answer my phone or text back when we're talking about what to do for the city of Greensboro. You know, I'm just really absolutely thrilled that Greensboro is experiencing the success it has. And when we talk about conflicts of interest, I studied this, I researched this according to state law. As long as the person who is on the city council does not receive direct benefit, they are allowed to vote as long as they refuse themselves. So, that is the law. Now, how do I feel personally? It really doesn't matter how I feel personally. This is state law that I have to follow, and there is also the consensus of the community. So, if this community wants to change things like that, they can go to our state legislature and try to get those things changed. But that is the North Carolina general statute now. And it states that it's not a conflict of interest if someone is on a nonprofit board or a CEO of a nonprofit.
Thank you, Ms. Edwina. Mr. Cummings.
That's a wonderful question. I expected George Parksman to walk in here somewhere. That seemed like a George Parksman question. But a very appropriate one, a very appropriate one. Why? Because the citizens don't believe that there's transparency. They believe the special interest has the ear of the council. And you know what? They've been right. They've been right. This council voted for a council member to be the president of DJI. And I don't know if there's been any impropriety, but certainly, certainly, the question has been raised. And it's a legitimate one. It was this council that allowed that to happen. When the people have a question about, in the law, it says not only are you to protect against the conflict of interest, but the appearance of a conflict of interest. A Mayor Mark administration is going to make sure there isn't even the appearance of a conflict of interest. Why do you have to do just the minimum, complying with the state law? Why can't you be better than that? We are better than that. One thing that we would do is bring more accountability to the council by communicating with the city, the citizens in the city. It should not be the case that the only time we are talking to the people in the city is at city council meetings. With technology, we will have a podcast that's designed to be like the Questions of the Prime Minister in Britain, where people can have a conversation with mayor, with members of the city council every other week to make sure that we're being responsive and responsible to the people, to let them know what we're doing. We're also going to let you know why particular jobs have been given to individuals. And we're going to make sure that people know the jobs that are hosted before friends of friends know them. This is what you deserve. This is what you should expect. This is what leaders should expect. I pledge to you, if you take a risk on me, I will make sure you have a council that you can believe in and be proud of.
Thank you, Ms. Edwina. Mr. Perkins.
Thank you. You know, we live in a pretty big city, three hundred thousand people. We've got a thirty-five-hundred-person organization, budget's eight hundred and thirty-two million dollars a year. So, in order to fund that budget, you've got to have people willing to invest in the community. They pay big taxes, and they employ a lot of people. And so, we all, we all live in a neighborhood somewhere, in a house somewhere, apartment somewhere. And somebody built those houses, those apartments. And it used to be farmland. So, over time, we have all been a beneficiary of some developer that somebody didn't want in their backyard. And they've gotten things done. They make Greensboro a lot better place. But a conflict isn't a bad thing unless you don't disclose that you have a conflict. Ms. Abuzuea is entirely correct that the state law requires you to vote unless you have a direct financial interest. And the reason the law's designed that way is because they don't want people deciding that this is a tough vote, and I'm going to make up a conflict and skate on it. We can't afford that to happen. So, they make you vote unless you have that direct conflict. Now, if you're a CEO of a nonprofit, and that nonprofit gives money to the city of Greensboro, you need to step, gets money from the city of Greensboro, you need to step back and let your other council members make that decision. You can't be involved in the discussion, and you shouldn't be able to vote.
Our next question. What will you plan to make our neighborhoods and communities safe again? I think that's a little big issue, like how can we make our neighborhoods and communities safe again? We hear the things on Spring Garden. I hear them in night, and I live on West Market Street. That was the way.
So, what are we going to do to make communities and neighborhoods safer? I am one of the few, and perhaps the only one up here, who is on the executive boards of crime stoppers. And I absolutely walk with the police officers and the mothers standing against gun violence. If you haven't heard of them, you need to. Because they have family members or children or an acquaintance who has died from gun violence and homicides in the city of Greensboro. I walk with them, I walk with the crime stoppers, I walk with the police officers. Why? Because that is what we need to do. We go into the areas where the homicides have occurred. Think about that. And what we are doing is building relationships with the community so our city can be safer because every single time we've done one of those walks, we have gotten tips a lot of times on the homicides. And we also get tips on other things like drug activity or when people think that something is going wrong in a certain area. So, yes, I'm walking the walk and talking the talk too. I am there, I am with them, and if I'm elected mayor, I'm not going to stop. I'm not going to stop doing those things. Because those things are very important to our city. We all want to feel safe. I had a gun held in my hand at the restaurant. Don't I want to be safe? I was robbed. And then another time, there were break-ins. So, we want to try. And after that, the police department has done an amazing job. They go out to communities and see what they need to make their communities safer. It's all about those relationships and keeping those relationships going so people feel comfortable.
Thank you, Mr. Cummings.
Sometimes you get to have the credibility to tell the truth. The crime problem has always been linked to the problem of poverty. And poverty is its greatest in East Greensboro. I have the credibility to be able to say that. That the way that we start to attack the crime property, problem, is to attack the poverty problem in East Greensboro. And I have the credibility to be able to go into it and do it. Why? Because I will like the majority of the people that live over there. They're not going to suspect that what I'm trying to do comes with some skepticism or that I'm doing it to increase my bona fides with some other group outside of East Greensboro. However, going to do it, the first thing that we're going to do is incentivize officers to live here in the city. We're going to make sure that an officer who lives in, a person who wants to be a police officer, if they are from the city of Greensboro, they're going to have preference in being hired. Secondly, for our leadership who are already in the police force that may not live in Greensboro, let's incentivize them to come back to Greensboro. I don't want to see at seven o'clock when the shift change, all these police individuals, all these law enforcement going outside of the city. If they lived here, then they would be able to protect our communities. Secondly, every patrolman should have a take-home police car. And it serves two functions. One, if they have take-home police cars, those cars sitting in the community make people feel like the police has a presence there. Michael Foucault wrote in his book that when people believe that they are being swatched, that they tend to self-correct their own behavior. Having police cars there, because our patrol and have take-home cars, would alleviate that. Secondly, increasing economic... Secondly, increasing economic opportunity in those problem areas. There's a reason why there's not a Chick-fil-A on the east side of Greensboro or you got a Publix distribution center, but not a Publix shopping market or Harris Teeter. We can bring the crime down there by utilizing having police here that live here, real community policing, what I call community policing plus, and being responsive to the citizens who live there to increase the economic availability of East Greensboro. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cuffin.
You know, like anything else, when you address public safety, it's complicated. It's complicated because we've got to back our police officers from the dials to Greensboro City Council. Those guys can feel when you've got an elected body behind them. And as mayor of the city of Greensboro, I've got a track record of backing our police department. And I will continue to have a track record of backing our police department. Now, I've got a few things that I would put more emphasis on because when I was driving out here on Wendover Avenue, 47 or 48 miles an hour, 300, I was blowing off the road at 80 miles an hour. Now, I'm sure all of you have had the same experience on Wendover Avenue. And so, we've gotten away from traffic enforcement with actual, physical police officers in the city. That's got to change. Because those traffic stops are things, number one, it's a safety issue. We're ranked on the wrong side of the accidents in this city. We've got too many of them. We've got to back those speeds down. 80, 90, 100 miles an hour on our local streets, we've got to back them down. I don't think we're going to do that with police red light cameras. But I think we can do that with squads moving around our city. And now that we're getting more staff, we can allocate resources too. The other thing I think we've got to do is this housing piece, and I'll hit on it real quick. The reason police officers live in the county is they can't afford to live here. So we're back to what I said earlier. We're 20,000-plus units down on affordable workforce housing. This isn't dirt poor folks. These are folks that are teachers, firemen, police officers that can't afford to live in our city. And we need to change that.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. We've got one more last question here, and we'll kind of combine these two. It goes back to a recurring theme we've had tonight. What are your creative ideas for promoting middle-class homeownership, controlling investors, or shrinking the pool of houses available and addressing this problem of not homelessness, but housing that we're seeing here in Greensboro? Is that what you want?
Thank you. I'm happy to answer that question. It's come up several times about trying to make sure that we have that middle-class housing. We already offer our police officers up to $30,000 down payment if they live in the city of Greensboro. And it is, there is some vetting, and they do have to meet the qualifications. But, you know, they do know that they have this available to them. It is also, it's called Homes for Heroes. It is also for firemen. It is also for teachers. This is something that I'm talking about, the knowledge that has been going on for the last so many years on city council. I can bring that up. Because it's true. We have those programs. We have programs for first-time home buyers. The regular middle class that we need the housing for, we have programs for them to have major down payment assistance, up to $10,000, $20,000 in certain cases. Some of that we got from grants. But all of those things that we are doing, and how are we going to continue this in the future? So, yes, I am behind the city manager's road to $10,000. You know why? Because we're going to meet that goal much quicker than we even think about. And we're going to go for another $10,000. We've never had goals like that before. I support that 100%. Because that way, we can have these met, and then we can have these met, and we are going to get to that. And if you think about it, the companies are coming. They're not coming overnight. Jet Zero is bringing maybe 9,000 people a year. We have to get people in our workforce. I'm on the workforce development board. And we need to get people to help them change their mindset on what they might be working for. Those jobs are going to be 80, 90, $100,000. We want our residents to have those jobs. And in workforce development, we're doing because we're allowing them training, and we will show them the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Abuzue. Mr. Cuffin.
You know, sometimes when politicians tell you things or they show up for photo ops, it's because they want you to get the banner headline. But I submit to you that if people knew, or if it existed, that individuals who wanted to be in law enforcement or fire could get $30,000 to live here, we wouldn't have the majority of our force that don't live in the city of Greensboro. What are we going to do to change that? We definitely can't keep on doing the same old things that we've done before. And more important than that, we cannot continue concentrating poverty in one area of the city. I agree with Mr. Smith, who said you can't just have what they call affordable housing, which is just the diplomatic way of saying low-income housing in one area of the city. That prevents that side from having an economic base to pull itself up. And as you know, if one part of the body is sick, it has the ability to infect the whole body. Let's diversify what we are doing economic, what we're doing with housing. Secondly, and I say this quick, I believe in a CLT-plus program, Community Land Trust Plus. What that is, is a private-public partnership that buys tracts of land to maintain at an affordable level housing costs. We can do this now. We can do this now. And I would not give the majority of the power to the government because what happens when administrations change? You need to make sure that the people have the majority of the power on these community land trusts. And we can do that all over the city, doing beautiful homes, not just apartments. Not just apartments, not just renting. What about extending the ability to buy instead of calling the Department a condo? Your rent to own your condo. We can do that. I also like hybrid commercial residential buildings, like down in the south end part of Charlotte. We could be doing that in more parts of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Perkins?
You know, housing obviously is a critical element. And we need to do our share as a government to make it affordable. But we also need to do better to let the private sector do their thing. Because no matter what we do in the public sector, we can't do all things for all people. We just don't have enough money to do it. So, if we can get the regulatory piece right, and today, the National Association of Home Builders tells us that 24% of the cost of a single-family house and over 40% of the cost of an apartment is due to regulatory costs. So, we've got to do what we can to reduce that. When the folks in Washington and Skip Alston are both saying we've got a housing crisis, folks, we've got a housing crisis because those sides don't agree very well. So, we've got to do that in our community. But we've got to look past right now. We've got to look at who is running our city organization. And we've got to work on a succession plan there. Right now, something happened to our city manager. Who'd be the city manager? Who's there? What's our bench strength like? We've got a lot of department heads that have been there for a long, long time. We don't have a bench strength there. When those guys reach 30, they are, most of them are 30 years now. When they reach long enough or they've had enough, they're out of there. Who's going to take their place? We've got to work on succession planning and really running this organization. You need a mayor in this city that has a business background, is strong enough to sit with the business people in this community and say, "How are we going to make this 3,500-person organization work?" We can't forget that the way we get things like police done, housing done, infrastructure done, is to have people that can actually do that. We've got to hire, and we've got to have vision, and we've got to look forward to do that. Thank you.
Congratulations to all y'all, folks. Nobody asked you questions about leaf collection.